Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, December 19th, 2017. This is a study session for the Prescott City Council. Let's do a roll call, please.
Mayor Mangarelli?
Here.
Mayor Protem Orr?
Here.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Here.
Councilman Lamerson?
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Here.
Councilman Siskah?
Here.
All are present, and Protem Orr is on the phone.
Okay, thank you. So, a couple of things. This afternoon, we have a legislative session update, and we'll have Barry Erins and Representative Noel Campbell. And then after that, Public Works is gonna do a presentation on the right sizing street projects. So, again, if you'd like to speak during the meeting, there's a speaker card back there that you can fill out and get that to the city clerk, and we'll take public comment on the Public Works presentation. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Representative Noel Campbell. Thank you so much, Noel, for being here today, and want to hear what you have to say. So, thanks so much.
Good afternoon, City Council and Mayor. First of all, I'd like to welcome the new members to the City Council. Got your work cut out for you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about my House bills for the upcoming session, and also hear about your concerns for Prescott. But since there are new members, perhaps this is a time to address the 2018 city objectives for the state legislative session, and how it's best to draft legislation to help this city. To begin with, just to write "support" followed by a fragmented sentence does not help me as a legislator. If you have an idea for legislation which you believe could help Prescott, you really need to talk to your city attorney first, and then to your lobbyist for the city, Mr. Erins, to discuss the merits. Then we'll all meet down at the Capitol and discuss the issue, flush out any details, and then that will go to the Legislative Council for drafting, and then the bill process starts. So that's kind of the procedure that we use. Let me give you an example. The mayor of Sedona noticed a loophole in Senate Bill 1350, the short-term rental vacation bill. Specifically, the bill required only vacation rental owners using Airbnb to register with the Department of Revenue and collect state and local taxes. But since there are other not online logging operations, there's no way to ensure that the state is collecting taxes on these other kinds of rental homes. I hope, as a result, Sedona is losing a lot of money, and I hope Prescott's kind of aware of that, because we're gonna try to close the loophole. Because the way it is right now, if you contract your home out to Airbnb, Airbnb collects the tax and sends it, and you get it. But if a private owner of the house rents his house out using the Internet, there's a loophole. He doesn't have to register with the Department of Revenue. And so you may not know how much money you're losing, or you may. I don't know.
Excuse me, Representative. Are these short-term rentals that you're talking about?
Yeah, short-term rentals.
Thank you.
So, Sedona found that they were losing a lot of revenue. You know Sedona's a high-dollar area. People want to go in there. And it might apply here to Prescott, but we won't know. But we're gonna try to fix the loophole that would require anybody using online services to comply with the law. The way it is right now, it's not obligatory. And so, I'm gonna have a meeting with Senator Kavanaugh this week, and the mayor of Sedona, and try to come up with some draft legislation that'll fix the loophole in the law. So that should help Prescott. Of course, you gotta track 'em down. I mean, you gotta find out who's doing that and not paying the city tax. So, this is the kind of cooperation I'm talking about. If you have an idea, if you have something that we can actually do down there at the legislature, just let me know, or let Mr. Erins know, and that's what we're there for. I mean, it's pretty difficult to divine what you folks are doing and what you need. So, you gotta come forward and let us know. So, I guess we'll proceed with the legislative agenda, and I'll start off and jump right in, all of you. Quality of life issue for the city of Prescott. Here's what I see. We have bills in the House to strengthen the 2107 that the city has implemented. Basically, the State Department of Health Services has finally decided they want to cooperate in this effort. And I think that comes from the governor, who's facing a lot of pressure because of the opioid crisis and the homeless crisis, that a large part of it comes from these sober living homes. So now the governor's putting a little pressure on those folks, and they want to cooperate. So Senator -- plus, at the same time, Scottsdale and Phoenix are having a huge problem right now. Astronomical. I've been to their meetings. You talk about unhappy folks. Go to one of their meetings, and you see these citizens. They have a citizens group that wants them out, not in my backyard, and they don't want to listen to anything. But so, there's a lot of pressure to do something about it. And so Senator Barto, who is really the major domo in the Senate on health issues, is gonna draft a bill, and Senator Brophy McGee is gonna draft a bill. And first of all, they're going to -- Senator Brophy McGee's bill, I haven't seen it yet. It hasn't been dropped. It's still in the formation process. It's going to basically have the Department of Health Services register these homes, and ensure that they meet a high standard of quality and care. And that is done through inspection of the home, and that would be done by a third party. So, we wouldn't have more permanent people on with the Department of Health Services. There would be a third party that would contract for a fee, would certify the home meets all certain standards. Some of the standards, and I have not seen the bill yet, or the rough draft even, but it could include drug testing. It could include background on every member that comes into the House. I mean, you know, you could have -- you don't know who comes into these homes if you're not doing a criminal background check. And so drug testing is very essential. So, this would be good. It would make it stringent, and it would get the state involved, and that's just on top of what we're trying to do down here in Prescott. Also, Senator Barto is working on a patient brokering bill, and you guys have all seen the homeless we have here in Prescott. If you go around and ask these folks, were they at a drug rehab house, more than likely, they're gonna say yes. Their money ran out, the insurance ran out, and they're from out of state. And we're carrying the burden of it here. They're all over the place. If you haven't seen, I know you've seen them. You can't go anyplace in Prescott without homeless panhandling. And I think that has a great deal to do with the structure of sober living home problem that we still have here in Prescott. I mean, let's face it, when the money runs out, they're done with them. So we're gonna have a state registry of homes, inspection by a third party, and we'll have support from the governor, the League of Cities and Towns, and the Salvation Army. So we'll have some pretty good folks behind what we're trying to do up there. And as soon as I get a rough draft of the bill, I'll forward it to the city attorney. So, any changes, modifications, inputs you want to do, this is how we'll do it. Number two, the HERF sweeps. I have three transportation bills to deal with the HERF. And the biggest problem with the HERF is they sweep it. And what do they sweep it for? Mainly, they sweep it for the Department of Public Service. Safety, I'm sorry. And, you know, they've just done it. It happens at 3:00 in the morning in the budget process. There's a one-liner in there that says, notwithstanding, the Department of Public Safety by statute has only allowed $10 million from the HERF. And they take 90, 120, depends on the year, but they take a lot of money out of it. So we're gonna try to stop that. One of the bills I have ready to go would be called a highway safety fee, which would allow the Director of ADOT to assess a fee to every registered vehicle, a certain amount of money to permanently fund the Department of DPS by 110%. So that would be the way we'd get DPS out of the HERF. And it would be a fee. It's not a tax. It doesn't have to go to the voters, but it's a fee. I don't know if it's gonna pass or not. It didn't pass last year when I ran it. It probably -- who knows? I'm gonna push it. The second thing we're trying to do is we're trying to eliminate the financial break that alternate vehicles get on their registration. You know, that's gotta end. That was -- it's been instituted for years, and we need to stop that. They are using the roads, and they need to pay their fair share, and this is one of the ways we can gain some revenue for transportation. And the third thing is, is we're gonna give the counties the ability, along with the voters of the county, to raise their tax for transportation. And so, that's the three bills that I have, and how they go, we'll wait and find out and see. Okay, well, let's talk about the state pension plan. You know about that. I mean, we don't pre-fund ours. We're kinda like Social Security, who pays as we go with it. You know, I'm not gonna go back over old history here about, you know, the cost to the cities. I'm sure you're all aware of that. But one of the things I want to tell you is that I do not support the city's position on not having employers' employees contribute more to their pension fund. The employees should contribute more to their pension fund. They -- we had -- we passed legislation that allowed them to go from 7.65 to 11.65. The Supreme Court of Arizona overruled that. But, you know, if we're gonna make this system viable, you have to have more of a contribution from the firefighters and police and other agencies that are covered by PSPRS. And so I can't -- I don't agree with the city's position on this. So, we can talk about that if you'd like. I will say this, though. Representative Stringer and myself were two of only four Republicans that voted to add on benefits to PSPRS retirees. I mean, the truth of it is, is that the benefits that these firefighters and police get are very good. They're excellent retirement system. But unfortunately, the fund can't, in my opinion, sustain it. So, we have to look for other ways to get that fund in better shape. We have Tier 3, and that's gonna help. It's gonna probably solve the problem, but we're looking 30 years down the road before that happens. Anyway, they wanted to add a new benefit on to existing benefits the police and fire had. Myself and Representative Stringer, the only two, we voted against that. It had to do with illnesses or prostate cancer that was added on as a covered illness, and it changed the whole burden of proof. Instead of, for example, a firefighter would retire, he'd get a second job, he'd come down with prostate cancer. And so, prior to the new law, he'd have to go before workman's comp and prove that his prostate cancer was directly related to fire hazards, smoke, inhalation, et cetera. Now, the burden of proof's on workman's comp to prove a negative. And so, it just goes to show you the strength of the firefighters and police union. Only four of us voted against that, out of 56 members, out of 60 members. So I'm trying to continue working on PSPRS. You know about the Ad-Hoc Committee. We've made our recommendations. We're gonna stay on top of it. It's something that's not gonna go away, so we're gonna have to deal with it as we do that. Well, I'd want to talk about the airport real quick. You know, we have a fund down there that they sweep. $25 million is allocated to the airport fund, and they sweep that, and I'm fighting that. Right now, they have about $3 or $4 million in that fund. But before I can do anything, and it has to be the city, you've got to get the buy-ins from Chino Valley and Prescott Valley, or however you're gonna come together to expand that airport. We've been talking about it for years. And for the life of me, I'm sitting up there waiting. You know, I agree with what we're trying to do at the airport, but nothing ever seems to happen on it. And the truth about that is, is that if we were to start the project tomorrow with everybody on board, it'd be 10 years, at least 10 years, before we would be ready to go with it. Because the environmental impact study, if you could even -- we'd have to get in line again, and that would take us three or four years, three years maybe. And then the time drags out to do that environmental impact study, plus all the other stuff that has to be done. It's a 10-year project. So, I'll do anything I can do down there to help do that. The governor has water issues big time on his plate right now. I have not been briefed on what it is. I will be briefed this week by his ADWR head, and I know better what they're dealing with. But, you know, when you talk about legislation for -- that affects the whole state. So whatever we do down there, we have to be very careful. And I support good water policy. I voted against my party on two occasions, dealing with the San Pedro River and the aquifer. So, I mean, I want to protect our water resources, but I have to -- we have to know exactly where the governor wants to go with this water plan. We don't know yet. One thing's for sure, they want to push it through in a hurry, and that probably won't happen. I'll let Mr. Erins discuss that a little bit. I'm sure he knows a little bit more about it than I do. And then lastly, impact fees. I think it's time to allow cities to renew impact fees. I mean, we know why they were -- we discontinued their use during the downturn. But if, you know, we have new people moving in, and it's only fair that new housing, new construction pay for the improvements that we need to go. So if you want to do impact fees, and you have an idea about it, then just send me a rough draft up and some ideas, and I'll run with it. Probably not gonna happen because of the industry and maybe the governor, but I don't know. Mr. Erins could possibly address that also. But I think it's time that we do that. So that's pretty much it, as far as the legislative agenda. You know, I'm here to help any way I can with you guys. I mean, I really mean that, but it's a lot of work, and it's important work. And it's important what you guys do down here at the city. And Prescott is my hometown, so I'm gonna bend every way I can to do whatever I can for you. So, do you have any questions for me?
Well, thanks so much for being here, Representative Campbell. Yes, questions and comments from the Council? Councilman Good?
Thank you, Representative Campbell. I have a number of questions. First of all, this change in 2107, which I'm very concerned about. We've done a pretty good job implementing the ordinance that you were able to, or the statute you were able to get enacted. And I'm concerned that the state may supersede those requirements and lessen the ability for us to continue to monitor and control these issues.
Right.
I'm concerned about this third party that's supposed to be the contracted monitor and enforcement arm.
Right.
From my understanding, their proposal is for that to be ASRA, which is the industry's -- No, it's like the Fox guarding the manhouse, yes. So I would be very skeptical that they would be able to do a good job monitoring and enforcing these issues. So those are big concerns for me. Secondly, patient brokering. I think that's a very important issue. I know you tried to get it through in the last session. You were blocked by one of the committee chairman. Do you expect that that will reoccur?
No, I don't. I was kind of told that that person who blocked that bill will be talked to by the Attorney General, because the issue's now gained statewide traction. And so, there're gonna be other people higher than me that will be talking to key members about this. So this has a lot of backing. And when you have Senator Barto and Kate Brophy McGee running these bills, they're pretty powerful ladies over there at the Senate. So I think that -- I feel good that we're gonna get something done. I mean, I haven't seen the rough draft yet, but I've been going to the meetings. And to talk about your concern about -- yes, I'm very concerned about who the third-party inspector is. At first, I thought it would be ASRA would do the inspection, and that's not gonna happen. We're not gonna -- I'm not gonna support ASRA doing inspections. Third-party reputable company that meets certain standards, you know, house standards, cleanliness, background, whatever comes up in the legislation, they'll pay -- the House owner of that sober living home will pay a fee. We hope it'll be around $500 for that inspection. It'll be on a yearly basis unless there's a complaint made, and then they'll go in and inspect again. So I'm looking for more stringent inspection, and that will drive, I think, the bad operators out.
Maybe you can ask that be an option for those communities that may not have the enforcement capability. They could accept that as an enforcement arm. And communities like Prescott that have already implemented that could maintain it.
Right. I think having the city, it is the lowest level of, you know, grassroots, and you get the first feedback from the constituents. But yeah, I'm not wedded to anything in it, because it's not on paper yet. It's just being discussed. So as soon as we see something concrete, we'll start discussing it, and the city will be involved in it, and we'll work it out. But I do -- I'm happy. I think it's good that the state gets involved. They're not gonna be licensing these homes. That's a whole different criteria. But if they can be registered and have more stringent requirements for going into the group home, and then have them inspected, and then the enforcement arm, this is what's -- I don't know yet. I would prefer that the state be the enforcement arm, and not -- we're not talking about the inspector being the enforcement arm at all. I don't know how that got in there. But the inspecting third-party will just be that. They'll be inspecting, they'll make a report, and they'll submit it to the Department of Health Services. And then if there are complaints, then the Department of Health Services will get involved. That's what I hope will happen.
Well, I hope that we can maintain our ability here in Prescott. We've done a pretty good job of reducing the number of homes, and we're gonna continue to monitor and enforce. And my concern usually is the state steps in and then takes away our authority, and we end up worse off.
I will agree to that. I'm not gonna allow a bill to water down something that's hopefully working. I mean, but it's all speculation right now, because there's nothing in writing that I have seen. And hopefully this week, something will come out. I don't know.
Well, on another issue, this PSPRS reform. This notion that Tier 3 has any type of a true solution is turning out to be smoke and mirrors and no substance. I made the comment to the governor when he was here at the Republican Mints Forum, where he made the same statement. And when I asked that question specifically of the specialists that came out from the Reason Foundation, and their statement that if, if 20% approximately of the new hires selected the defined contribution option, then in 20 years, we might see that liability curve bend down to a flat level, and we could see some relief. But from my understanding, there hasn't been a public safety officer since it went into effect the 1st of July that selected that option. And I just discovered yesterday that PSPRS has awarded a contract to the investment team advising these new people. It's a company called Galloway, and it's almost completely stacked with ex-public safety, police, and fire officers who have very little professional training or experience advising them in investments. So no wonder new hires aren't selecting that option. I think they need to have an unbiased advisor to talk to people about the benefits of that Tier 3 selection process. Otherwise, it's not gonna do any good.
Well, the law doesn't address that, and I think even more than the Tier 3, I think the Tier 1 and 2 is the problem and the shortfall. I mean, that's --
Or amendment to deal with any of that.
Yeah, and we're not gonna do that. They're not -- there's no desire in the legislature for that to happen. So, by the way, quickly, the PSPRS committee that I headed, our recommendations were that, one, we continue the committee in the next legislative session, as informing the public. Because it's gonna get worse for everybody. It's not gonna get better. I mean, the rate of return, expected rate of return, I don't see happening. So, the more we keep on educating, that'll be fine. We also want the board to give us a five-year update on a rolling schedule about how they are actually performing. And the third thing is, we're recommending that we have an independent audit conducted through the Attorney General's office to look at PSPRS and their operations. So, the idea, it didn't pass muster of a constitutional amendment. It was a bridge too far, so.
Well, I know you're working on it, and hopefully we'll get some movement. I know Representative David Livingston said at the mayor's summit that he would drop a bill for some reform.
But he also caveated. Yeah, but he also said, as long as the League of Cities and Towns would support that, and they don't. They don't support it.
And lastly, thank you very much for the interest in promoting this impact fee reform. Even if we can start at a very, very modest level, it'll certainly help Prescott and our other neighboring cities dealing with some rapidly increasing development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Siskah?
Thanks for coming up, Representative. The question I have is, I've heard the word toll roads. And what is that? What would that entail, and what are the possibilities?
Well, as Chairman of Transportation, I can tell you, there is no money in our budget other than $25 million for new road construction. So, if the federal government were to come down and come in with millions of dollars, we have to match at least 20% of that, the state does. We'd have to -- we could maybe bond. I mean, it'd be very difficult for us to do that right now, because we're starving ourselves of revenue. We, as you know, we have not raised the gas taxes '91. A dollar in tax revenue '91's worth 47 cents today. We're not keeping up with inflation. So we're, you know, to look at what can be done, when you say toll road, you're looking at a public-private partnership, P3s. And there're certainly options. The one thing is, they get built in a hurry, and you have private investors that come in, and they're gonna make their profit. But you're gonna get the road, and people are gonna pay to use it. There comes in the toll. We have several options we're looking at. The I-17 could be a P3 project. If they went to a new route around, a separate road. They also are adding, talking about adding gates and lanes to the I-17. But nothing concrete has come forward yet to even move on that. The Interstate 11, the proposed, you know, no-gallus to Las Vegas, they're definitely talking about that being a P3 project toll road. So, I don't know. Your guess is as good as mine.
What are the opportunities for putting an inflation clause in our gas tax?
You know, one of the ways -- that would all have to go to the voters. Anytime you deal with taxes, it has to go to the Arizona voters. But one of the things they could do is put the tax at a percentage of the cost of each gallon. So if you had a 10% tax on a price of gasoline, right now, what is it, $2.50 a gallon? There'd be a 25 cents a gallon tax. As the price went up, the tax would increase. As the price went down, it would decrease. And that solves it, because you're automatically, you know, adjusting for inflation and the cost of fuel. But that's an idea that the governor will not support right now. Any taxes, I have been told, he's just not gonna deal with them. Maybe after he gets reelected, I don't know. But I would certainly, if we had the backing for tax increases, which we don't, that's why we're going the fee route. A fee doesn't have to go to the voters. It has to pass the House and Senate. The governor has to sign it. But I think there's a good possibility that we could fund DPS from a highway safety fund, a fee. And I think he would sign that. I think if I could get that through the House, and get it through the Senate, and up to the governor's desk, I think he'd sign that. Because he knows. He knows we have to get DPS out of the HERF sweep.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much, Representative Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Mayor Protem, go ahead.
I know I'm not there, but thank you for coming up. You mentioned three things on transportation as far as gaining revenue. One was alternative vehicles.
Right.
The other is about -- I didn't hear that, the second and third.
Can't understand.
Can you say that again?
I did not hear the -- if you could just talk about the three items as far as creating more revenue for transportation that you was trying to do.
Right.
Legislation.
Well, I think, is she asking the three different ways to raise revenue? Highway safety fee, the financial break for alternative vehicles? You're trying to close that loophole. Was there something else that you were --
And giving the counties the ability with voter approval to raise their tax for transportation. That's a bill that Yavapai County has asked me to run for.
That was -- Yavapai County would have the opportunity to, which we do not now, right?
Right.
Okay, all right. And the other thing, I agree with Councilman Good about the sober living. We certainly don't want anything that's going to take away any of our progress that we've made here in Prescott.
Right. I'm committed to that, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Representative Campbell. Okay, let's introduce Barry Erins, our lobbyist.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mangarelli, and members of the council. For the record, Barry Erins. And I'm happy to be up here, as always. I'm gonna introduce a guest that I brought up that was in response to your saying yes when I said, "Do you want to have somebody come up and talk about the governor's water process?" Before I introduce him... Before I introduce him, let me just give you a touch of overview. The governor has been working on water process since his second state of the state. And there are some very, very significant reasons why. He started a process last summer to kind of get everything together and start moving some proposals forward. And there are three concepts that he worked on. Number one, it's the right time to do it. There are, from time to time, these articles get published in national media that raise the question of, gee, do you really want to expand or move to Arizona where they're going to run out of water? And that's devastating. And unless we can continue to make the modifications necessary in what is probably one of the finest national models for a groundwater management act that was passed in 1980, and I remember those meetings because they were extremely contentious, but we got it done. And that has gone on and we've made a couple of modifications over the year. So number one, it's got tremendous economic development implications to make sure that we do that. Number two, it's the right process. He gathered together a tremendous group of civic leaders from around the state to work on this thing and they worked very, very diligently. They had two groups. They have the groundwater management group. They have the Colorado River Water Management Group. And those two groups have worked very hard and very diligently to come up with a set of plans. And it's the right policies. And I think what we want to do today is to have Doug Dunham, who is the Assistant Director for the Arizona Department of Water Resources and my colleague at the legislature, he's the legislative liaison for the department. And he's going to go over a few of the specific policies that are specifically indigenous to this part of the state so that you'll have an overview. I would like you to know that the Northern Arizona Water Users Association, I think you're aware, have written a letter supporting the governor's process. That doesn't mean they support all of the policies. Nobody's bought off on absolutely everything, including the governor. But they support the process, the direction we're going, and the fact that we do need to take action. And the one thing I would disagree with my good friend Noel Campbell on is I believe that we will get a significant amount of that water policy changes that the governor is promoting done this session. And quite frankly, I don't think we have a choice. So I'm going to, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask you if I could yield to Doug Dunham, who's going to give you that brief overview, and then I'll come back and talk about a few more issues. Doug?
Did I give you a promotion, by the way?
I did get a promotion there, but thank you. I'll let Tom know. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for having me. For the record, my name is Doug Dunham. I'm the Special Assistant to the Director, Legislative Liaison and Ombudsman for the Department of Water Resources. And as I tell my kids, when they have a bunch of titles for you like that, they just don't know what to do with you, so. What I like to do is just do a brief overview, kind of touching a few topics that have come forward and then kind of, you know, answer any questions that you may have. So kind of rewinding a little bit, the department started working in 2014 on a statewide report on looking at our local water supplies, statewide water supplies, our expected growth and how we may see some shortfalls and other issues that were being brought forward to the department from particularly rural areas of the state. That wasn't exclusively. There's still areas within the active management areas that are facing issues as well. When Governor Ducey was elected, he picked up that report and directed the department to start on a two-tiered track to look at local issues, working within specific planning areas, finding out what the local on-the-ground issues were and working on a detailed plan on how the department may assist and listen to local communities and their water issues. And then concurrent with that is a statewide long-term planning commission he put together called the Governor's Water Augmentation Council. Now, that council has been charged with looking at long-range planning, things, big projects, things that we can do that take 10, 20, 30 years to get in place. Think of another CAP, another SRP, those types of long-range planning. Well, with those two things coming together, the governor realized that there are issues that need more immediate attention. And so this spring, he, early this spring, called together this, what he's calling the Governor's Water Conversation and brought together leadership across the state, representatives of industry, rural cities, metro cities, agriculture is heavily represented, and as well as environmental and other NGO groups to try to bring together what are the issues and what things can we address? Again, it's been since 1980, since the groundwater code was passed, and looking at what tweaks may need to be made to the groundwater code and other issues to looking forward to solve water, long-term water supply issues. As Mr. Erins mentioned, it doesn't take every six months or so when there's not another article questioning, is Arizona really a good place to move to because of their water supply? And what I would like to respond is that we can remember our neighbors to the West. They had two years of drought and they were cutting people off. Portions of the state of Arizona have been in drought for over 20 years. We have not cut one person off and that's because of the long-range planning this state has done. But we can't sit on laurels. We need to look forward and keep moving into the future. So one of the overarching things that we're looking at is what's called DCP and DC+. DCP is drought contingency planning. That is interstate agreements that we're working with the seven basin states on the Colorado River as well as the federal government and the Republic of Mexico. How do we stave off shortages on the Colorado River? We are within five feet of hitting trigger points where we start taking shortages. Arizona is the junior priority on the river and we will be the first to take hits. California, given what they have experienced recently, realizes that long-range planning, they need to help cooperate with the rest of the western states. They have actually offered to start taking shortages sooner. And so we've been working with the other basin states and our federal partners to craft programs to try to conserve water in Lake Mead and in other projects to shore up those critical levels in the lake. DCP Plus is the sister plan to that and that's all of the, involving all of the water users within the state of Arizona and how they will be impacted and make sure we minimize and spread those potential impacts out. So those two are joined together and they're very critical. We've got some critical timing that we need to continue to move forward on those, bringing those concepts together. And it's a very short timeframe we need to keep moving on. Other thing I'd like to address is, again, as Mr. Erins mentioned, all of these concepts have been brought forward. They are conceptual in nature only. We haven't had any statutes put onto paper yet and none of this is set in stone. None of it is set until all of it's agreed to. And there's going to be, there is going to be a package brought forward this session. The exact details are still being worked out. My director, the governor's staff have been meeting with the legislators. Again, we're scheduled to meet with Mr. Noel this week. We've met with Senator Fan and other representatives, trying to make sure that the legislature's heavily involved and they understand the issues that have been brought forward to us and moving these things forward. So one of the proposals that got moved forward is, right now, under the water adequacy rules in, under the Assured Water Supply Program, the, there's a depth-to-water limit that's currently in place. That is, the proposal is to change that specific criteria for aquifers up on the Coquenino Plateau. So the depth of water in a lot of those areas, because of the nature of the geology, is below, naturally occurring below what the current rural state. So there's an exemption that may or not be granted. So we work with the local stakeholders to find, craft a more, a positive way to look at this instead of just relying on an exemption. That's, again, been supported by NAMAW as well. Another key piece that we brought forward, my notes here, is the permanent legislation to allow emergency drought transportation of groundwater outside of the AMAs. Right now, there are, the general statute is prohibit groundwater transportation at any cost. We have seen communities where their water systems have gone down and the local, nearest local source from emergency supply just happens to be right across the basin boundary and they can't bring that water in. So this would provide a permanent exemption within statutes that would only allow a short term, like six months, for a non-permanent connection, so it'd have to be trucked or hauled by rail into a community and it can only be used for livestock and human consumption. So just an emergency to let folks, if your water system goes down, they're not completely dry. Right now, the groundwater code dictates what management plans that the department is supposed to follow. That's all the conservation requirements, et cetera, within the five active management areas. The dictates of that go out to 2025. There's, they are silent beyond that. So we're looking to lay out conservation plans, management plans for the active management areas beyond 2025. The other proposal that has been brought forward, somewhat controversial, is the mandatory measuring and reporting for non-exempt wells outside of the active management areas. So those would be your large ag wells, they would be for anything that's irrigated over 10 acres or using over 10 acre-feet per year. Anything smaller than that would still be exempt from reporting. Lastly, legislation amending how irrigation-not-expansion areas are put into place. We've got several areas in the rural parts of the state down in Cochise County, specifically Wilcox, Wilcox area, San Simone area, as well as up in Mojave County and La Paz County where there's lots of new agriculture coming in. So this is, this is ground that's never been broken before. We've got a lot of people that are retreating out of California, looking for a new place to set up farming. The existing inhabitants there are concerned about all these new large ag users impacting their groundwater levels. And so we've had a couple petitions to try to establish a new irrigation-not-expansion area, which would help control addition of new agriculture in those specific basins. The statutes are pretty unclear on exactly how to do that. We had to take our best guess, you know, got appealed, we worked our way through it. And so we'd like to clarify those statutes so it's very clear on exactly what standards the department should look at. And then lastly, I just want to mention that although a lot of these are rural Arizona issues, again, with the thinking about the state overall and our national image, right now, we're having problems issuing, we can't issue at the moment, new assured water supply determinations in the Penale Active Management Area. The problem there is that there are developments that came in during the boom time that failed. They didn't move forward. In most cases, they didn't even get a plat recorded. But because we've made the decisions to issue assured water supply determinations for those, they're on our books. The total number of subdivisions that could move forward under those plans is nearly quadrupled the current population. I'm being told by the development community that none of those plans at this point are viable anymore because the market doesn't support that. Those designs, those concepts just are not where the growth is happening. So we're trying to work with the local Penale stakeholders and craft some modifications to the Assured Water Supply Program to allow, when these temporary reservations come in, how do we get those off the books quicker to ensure that we don't have water speculators sitting on water and blocking actual real development moving forward? So that's got some statewide implications as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Blair?
I'd like to know, excuse me, how the governor looks at NAMAW and the different groups that have been put together. They've come forth with recommendations in the past. A good example is there's water out there, but it just doesn't happen to be in the right place. So when legislatively you have the right to pump water, like the city of Prescott, being an AMA and being able to pump water from the Big Chino, the big drawback is there's never been the funding mechanism from the state through WIFA or whoever to help offset the cost of importing water. Basin's a prime example from the Blue Ridge Reservoir. There's water there, it was a problem of getting it to where it needed to be. So the question is, is he looking at the state as individual pockets? Because I don't think you can put the state all in one envelope and say, we're going to do this and make it work throughout the state because it's not a cookie cutter situation. So I believe that he needs to listen pretty loudly to the people that have been working as individual groups like NAMAW for years and SAMW and all the different Upper Verde Water Protection Coalition, people that have been feet on the ground within these active management areas to give him some input as well. Because I think we have the right legislatively to do what we need to do and I'd hate to see some kind of legislation that would undermine what this community in the state of Arizona has done far more than any other community as far as water conservation and water importation. So I hope he's got his eye on that ball.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Blair, thank you for those comments. That is, that is a, funding for rural communities is a particular thorny issue. The population base isn't there to finance the necessary infrastructure. There was a statute that was passed and created a water revolving fund, Water Resources Devolvement Fund, several sessions ago. Unfortunately, the year after it was created, that was the big crash, all the funds that were set aside for that were swept and it's never been refunded. There are discussions, I understand, as part of this set of concepts, is to try to bring some funding back to that. So that fund is related to WIFA and so therefore there would be a revolving loan fund. Part of the issues with WIFA is it's tied to federal money and therefore there are restrictions on expansion of service areas, expansion of infrastructure. They can help repair, but you can't bring any new in. This would set aside specifically for bringing in new supplies, building new infrastructure. So hopefully we can, we can get some money into that and start, start that revolving fund to help local rural communities. Several other western states have a similar process and it's been very successful there.
That I can appreciate and thank you. And I just hope they recognize the fact that water is the lifeblood of any economics within the state of Arizona. And northern Arizona is not alone in putting money in the coffers to the state. I mean, if we have the water and we have the economic background and all the eco-environmental stuff that we have here, we can bring in those same companies up here as Phoenix can down there. But we have to have the opportunity from the state to do so.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being the governor's ear. I do have some questions with regards to things that are history. And at one time, we tried to run legislation addressing exempt wells. At some point, you have to acknowledge there's a difference between private property and state water resources. They're two different things. And, you know, an exempt well is charged with permission to pump X amount of gallons per minute, which extrapolates out to X amount of acre-feet on an annual basis. And yet, we as a community, as an assured water provider, are expected to maintain a certain amount of water consumption per unit, so to speak, for lack of a better word. If I'm not mistaken, at 35 gallons a minute, that comes out to about 57 acre-feet a year for one exempt well. And with no regulatory mechanism in place, we went through this back with Speaker Flake a number of years ago, got kind of bounced around a little bit because of the cattle industry, et cetera. And while I understand all of that, at the same time, we keep promoting economic development and growth opportunities, et cetera, on a very finite resource such as water. So my curiosity would be to the governor, at what level are you prepared to address exempt wells, number one? And then number two, for example, here in the municipality, the cost to deliver the water is X amount of dollars. However, if you can drill a well cheaper than our cost to deliver the water, you can go, still go get an exempt well. All right? So now all of a sudden, the state's in competition with the management strategies of the municipality. So I have, I have some questions that you being up here as his emissary, maybe you can take that back and I'm appreciative of Barry sitting here because he knows we've been down this road for a long time with regards to water.
Councilman, I appreciate those comments. We are aware of those issues. You know, the Prescott AMA is, has by far the highest concentration of exempt wells within all of the AMAs. There's actually more exempt wells in Prescott AMA than in Tucson AMA. It's second only to Phoenix. It's second only to Phoenix. And, and the Phoenix basin is, you know, geographically much, much larger. So there are also issues with clustering of exempt wells. They begin to impact each other. And then a lot of times when those wells go dry, then it's, you know, those, those residents, they look to their nearby municipal provider for, as an emergency backup. So it does put pressure on, on the cities from that aspect as well. So I know we worked briefly last session on a slight, slight modification to that exemption for exempt wells within designated water providers, and I'll be glad to continue to work on that with, with your, with your folks.
Thank you for your response.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. And I think now we'll move to, back to Mr. Ehrens. Thank you.
You can give my two hour and 45 minute legislative overview in the next six minutes? First of all, I again, I want to thank Doug Dunham for coming up here, Assistant Director, Assistant to the Director, it all sounds the same to me, so you can tell Tom that I gave you that raise. The last 45 days, I've been visiting with a lot of my clients. I've been up in Apache County, I've been down at the Tucson Convention Visitors Bureau. I talked to the superintendents at the Yuma, of the Yuma area schools and at the National Propane Gas Association meeting in Washington DC. And I've been giving them kind of an overview of what issues are important and what I think is going to come up with an attention to each of their indigenous issues. But there are a few issues that have come up that are going to be cutting across the board that the legislature is going to deal with. You just heard about the water one. I guarantee you, the water issue will be involving the legislature for the entire session. Doug said that the bill isn't written yet, that's right, because they don't have a complete handle on everything they need to do. I know everybody's saying, well, we can't take a position until we get language, and I understand that. And in my 48 sessions around the legislature, I have never, never given a complete commitment on any bill until I saw the language. But the fact of the matter is, is that the process is moving forward. The people who need to be talked to are being talked to, that's going to be one issue. Second issue is the budget. There is a shortfall again. It, it's a structural deficit. It's caused by some circumstances with regard to collections and so on that have been difficult to get our arms around with regard to some reductions in some taxes. Fact of the matter is though, when those things came out in September, which was first quarter returns, what we found shortly after that was that growth was far exceeding what we had expected. Now, you can say it's because of the new administration or in spite of the new administration, but the fact of the matter is, is that we're growing as a country over 3% now. And I don't think anybody a year ago this time would have predicted that we would make that kind of a jump. What leads me to believe that I would predict that revenues will probably tick up in the second quarter. Retail has already appeared to be ticking up, and in the third quarter, and that could balance us out as the year comes by. But right now, the budget is pegged at about $124 million deficit, which everybody's going to have to deal with. Secondly, there is some pressure to consider putting Proposition 301, which was the six tenths of a cent tax for, sales tax for the schools, that was passed in the year 2000, expires in 2021, and there's some pressure to get that on the ballot. No governor, Republican governor running for reelection wants a tax bill on the ballot, and there still is time to get that on in the 2020 ballot. My best guess is that it will not come in the 18 ballot, it will be in the 2020 ballot, and there's discussion as to whether it should be the six tenths, whether we should increase it to 1%, whether we should go 1.5%. I've heard all kinds of arguments on both sides. I don't want to spend a lot of time on that because it's not indigenous to the city, but it's important. Number three, or number four, I should say, opioids. That's going to be another issue that's going to consume an awful lot of time and attention, and it's a problem that we're all aware of because it's a crisis. It's a, it, it's a healthcare crisis and a healthcare emergency. The governor has offered some recommendations. I think some of them are going to be taken very quickly. I think some of them are going to get a lot of conversation. I think there are some other recommendations that are going to come out that haven't come out yet, but that is going to be a, a very, very interesting one. So now with that in mind, let me turn to some issues that I think are indigenous to the city of Prescott. First of all, I want to remind all of you that Senator Phan was the one who, two years ago, saved the integrity of WIFA. It was a bill that she had introduced, it was making some organizational changes, which were good changes. They were part of some of the governmental reorganization that has turned out to be beneficial. But we went to her, and full disclosure, you know, I do represent the Arizona Municipal Water Resources Association, which is the Phoenix version of NAMO. And we went to her, asked her to help to make sure we retain the integrity of WIFA. So if we get a chance, to Councilman Blair's questions, to ever go into some financing for infrastructure, it still has the integrity to attract the kind of bondholders that we need to be able to access that money. And with regard to exempt wells, we did do something, and, and Doug Dunham was very, very helpful last year, working with me, Senator Phan, some of the other stakeholders. And, and now that kind of gets wrapped into this whole water issue. So rather than run a separate bill, I think we keep bringing that up from time to time to see if we can get some of those adjustments made. I don't want to repeat anything about what Mr. Campbell said. We are certainly watching legislation that deals with the sober living homes, the HERF sweeps, state pension, and the Airbnb. And again, full disclosure, since I represent three of the larger convention visitors bureaus in the state, we have the same concerns that I think a lot of municipalities have. We work hand in glove on that, and that is that you want to make sure that there is fair competition. If you run a hotel, you are subject to taxation, you are subject to pass on taxation, and the taxation is extremely robust. For any of you who have ever looked at your hotel bill and you see that the, that the total taxation can run 12, 13, 14%, depending upon your location. We want to make sure that if there is a type of transient lodging, and that's the key phrase you're looking for, transient lodging, it should be subject to at least the minimum taxation, and we're going to make sure that those loopholes were closed. And I have been in conversations with, with Mr. Campbell about that. Couple of other issues I wanted to highlight. Doug talked about the water supply, state budget amendment for the hot shots, and I want to thank Tyler, who's been working with our finance department through the manager's office to get the numbers that are necessary. That is going to be a tough ask because it's a lot of money. We're talking about now $8 million that we need to come up with. We can spread it out, we can ask the legislature to spread it out for a while, but nevertheless, when you're looking at $124 million worth of deficits, asking for an additional 8 million is a significant increase in costs, and I think the legislature still has $1 million yet to pay up on the original 5 million that was recommended. And I don't want to get into too much of the detail on that because it's kind of complicated in terms of the calculation, but I did want to mention that we have been working with Senator Phan on it. She was going to approach it last year, but because we were only in the second year, we thought it would be improvident for us to try to get the legislature to make that far of a commitment on it. So we will be approaching them this year to try to find a payout methodology that we can do it. I think the commitment's there. I, I, I think that we have a good story to tell, and I think there's a sensitivity to it. But I will tell you that, that it is going to be a tough ask, and we are going to have to work very, very hard on that. Impact fees, Councilman Good and I had a brief conversation about last month when we were up here doing the strategic plan, which I'm very pleased to see we've got our four priorities up there, yay. And I will tell you that I've been in touch with the League of Cities and Towns. That's going to be a two-year project. I talked to Patrice Kraus, who is the Director of Legislative Affairs for the League of Cities and Towns. She and I have known each other for decades and have worked together on issues like this. We had a long conversation about it. There are several cities, Councilmen, all over the state that share some of the issues. There's some library issues, there's some consolidation issues, there's just some fee issues and so on. And everybody recognizes, including the home builders, including the development community, that there are going to have to be some changes made. So what we're going to do is, we've identified kind of a, a process we're going to go through. We're going to start having the conversations during this session without a bill. We'll do have conversations, start identifying priorities, and start getting a consensus on some of those priorities. The reason you do it while they're in session is because they're all there. You ever try to track down Noel Campbell when we're not in session? It ain't an easy thing to do. And, and there's 89 others of them that play that same disappearing act when they're not in session. But when they're in session, they're all in that one square mile, and I can keep track of them. And we're going to have those conversations. We've already made some inquiries with the Southern Arizona and the Central Arizona Home Builders Association. So we're going to, we're going to be working on that. And I would suspect that by the end of the summer, we'll have some hard proposals, and I look forward to your comments as I continue to work with you on your, on your strategic plan, that we can get some meat on the bone on those issues. And I thank you, Councilman Good, for bringing those to my attention. Patient brokering issue, I think Mr. Campbell already covered some of that, so I don't need to go into more of that. I do want to give a couple of thank yous though, because I think it's always appropriate. Number one, Noel Campbell, he is very loyal to this community. He's always there when I need him. He's always available. So is Senator Phan, and so is Representative Stringer. And each in their own way have done a lot with different types of issues to help this community and represent it quite well. And I know if there is an Armageddon battle that we have to fight, those three are going to be there on the side of the city of Prescott. John Palladini's been very, very helpful. He's always available during session. When I have to call him and say, make, I'm not burdened by a law degree, okay? So sometimes I do need somebody who is to tell me what something means, and he's there. And of course, Michael Lamar's been very supportive, and I especially want to single out Tyler Goodman because he has really adapted to this job of, of, he comes up with stuff before I even know about it, which is good, because that means he's got his ear to the ground, he's always available, and very, very helpful. I want to call him late in the evening to go over something. And of course, Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate your support. Happy to answer any questions, and it's only four minutes after two.
Very well done. Questions, comments from the council?
Well, that is encouraging.
Great job. Thanks so much for being here, Mr. Ehrens, Mr. Dunham.
It's always a pleasure.
Thank you, Representative Campbell, for coming today.
And with your permission, I think we're going to head on out.
Yes, thank you so much. All right, we're going to move on to a discussion, a presentation, I should say, by the Public Works.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Oros, Public Works, and we're going to talk about our approach to capital projects and how we right-size projects. So just real briefly, in our current budget, we have 67 capital items in our budget. In other words, projects, capital investments, vehicle purchases, and those types of items. Currently, we have 42 capital projects that are under contract and in process, whether those are design projects or construction projects. As far as our budget goes, of the approximately $60 million capital program budget, we've expended and or encumbered approximately 47% of that budget in the first five months. So we're doing ahead of previous years, and to give it some perspective, the last two fiscal years total have been about 56 to 57% expended and encumbered. So we're moving right along on the delivery of projects. Now to the, the meat of the topic of right sizing. We wanted to kind of brief council on our approach to projects and how we do that. We do have a overall goal, when we're looking at a reconstruction project, of balancing and efficient use of our funding. We have limited funds from our water fund, wastewater fund, street fund, to lesser extent, the solid waste fund. You have by county flood control and some grant funding. But the first three are our primary funding sources, so we want to make sure we use those wisely. We do look at a street segment or segments in a holistic approach. We do look at, and this is just in alphabetical order for discussion, drainage, what's going on there, and we'll talk more about that in a second. The pavement condition, sidewalk condition, the transportation system safety, vehicles for pedestrians, for bicyclists. We look at our infrastructure for utilities, our water system and our wastewater systems. So we do look at the whole package and not just go in for one specific thing when we're looking at a reconstruction project. We do have other projects that are like a water line up sizing. We know what we're doing, that's all there is, and we can progress through that. When we look at the drainage system for a project, our, our goal is to make the conditions better than what they were before we started. What we found, especially on infill projects, we, we have our design standards, but to meet them in an infill condition, the costs become very significant. So we want to improve those conditions. We look at the age and condition of the system, whether it's the pipes, the catch basins, et cetera. We look at the capacity of the system, how much water can flow on the street without overtopping. Do we have a history of property complaints, private property impact, where we have citizens calling us saying, hey, my, my house is flooding, so to speak? And we look at pedestrian and vehicle safety in terms of drainage. There's a chart that we use that the county has produced that balances the depth of flow and the velocity of flow. In a pedestrian environment, if you have too much velocity, you have safety issues. So we look at those as we're evaluating drainage. Next general area we look at is the pavement condition. The goal of our pavement program is to look at a long service life. Pavements generally are designed to last 20 years with some maintenance. We look at how can we extend that with the limited funding we have. A tool that we have is the pavement quality index, PQI. You'll hear about that as we move through the year. That's basically a grading system for pavement. Hundred, a score of 100 is perfect, brand-new asphalt. A score of zero is basically gravel. So there's a sliding scale, and we try to keep our pavement in a very good condition. We look at the history of potholes, how many times have our street maintenance group go out fixing potholes in an area? We look at how much area do we maintain? Is the street too wide? Is it too narrow? How do we balance that and an efficient use of our assets? We look at traffic volume. Does the street carry 10 cars or 10,000 cars? There's a street that has 10,000 cars, has more of a benefit for more people, so we put that into the mix as we evaluate projects. We also look at the type of vehicles using a street. Is there a lot of truck traffic, which tends to impact the pavement more? So we look at all these different things when we're looking at pavement. Continuing on, we look at sidewalks. And the goal of the sidewalks is to provide a friendly system for pedestrians, make it inviting, make it viable, make people want to walk. We look at accessibility for all users, connectivity, can you get from one place to another on a sidewalk? The, just the general overall condition, is the sidewalk flaring from four feet to eight feet back to four? How is that all working? Is the, is the concrete aged and falling apart? We look at individual panels, are there trip hazards that we need to address? Then width, if it's downtown, we want to have a nice wide pedestrian walkway where we can to encourage more people to walk side by side versus in single file. It's just a, a more friendly system. The overall transportation system is really, combines all these elements that we've just talked about. However, when we're looking at this, we're looking at the safe movement for all the users. Vehicles, is it safe, is there things that we can address safety for vehicles? Pedestrians, bicyclists, how do we accommodate all the users on the roadway? Minimizing conflicts where vehicles and pedestrians or bicycles intersect? How can we make things more safe? Then we get into the underground utilities with water and wastewater. We evaluate the reliability, the quality and quantity of water and wastewater that moves through our system. At about 50 years of age for these underground pipes, we start being able to evaluate them of, should they be replaced? Some pipes are 70 years old and functioning very well. Some are 30 years old, and we're out there maintaining them frequently for a variety of reasons. So we look at this overall age and condition. Pipe material, is it asbestos pipe? Is it steel? Is it PVC? What, what are we dealing with? So we look at those types of materials. So, we look at those types of materials. System capacity, is it meeting our standards today? And what's the future needs for the area? Because when we go in and do a reconstruction, we don't want to go back in there for 15, 20 years. We want to be done with it. So, what projects does this fall into? Well, we have a number of projects here that are in progress. We have two projects, the Willis-Cortez intersection project and the Bashford Court parking lot and alley project, that's ready to go out to bed in the next couple of weeks. Robinson Drive, that project's been moving along, and we're at 90% completion on the plans. That -- let me get back up for a quick second. On the Bashford Court parking lot, we have applied the right sizing concept to this, and we have taken out some items. We've taken out some of the colored concrete that was in the previous design. We've taken out some trees that may not grow in a shady area, back in that area, and also become a maintenance problem, working with the streetlights that are in the parking lot that are needed for pedestrian safety. So, we've already gone through that right sizing for those projects. Robinson Drive, it's at a point where it's been right sized, drainage is manageable, pavement is manageable. We have a good handle on the scope of the project. Then we get into the Penn Eastwood, Summit Beach, McCormick Projects, North Washington, Churchill, South Washington, Goodwin Street, Carlton, Alarkin Street projects. That group of projects is at a point where we want to take a look at them critically, look at how we can right-size them from not only a drainage perspective, but a sidewalk replacement perspective, and utilize our funding in a very balanced and efficient use, replace things that are needed, not just because. So, we're going through that process right now. And on one of the projects, just to give you an example of what that means, the Goodwin project, we've gotten feedback from our design consultants on what does right sizing mean as far as drainage goes? The current project budget for the Goodwin project is 5.7 million. The allocation that was for the drainage improvements was about 1.6 million. As we looked at the right sizing, we found that we could improve drainage, not actually solve the whole drainage situation, for about 750,000. So, we've, just by right sizing the drainage system, we've saved almost half, about 850,000. So, that's about a 15% reduction in the overall project cost just for right sizing, making improvements to the drainage system. We're applying this concept to all those projects we just discussed. So, we're moving forward and being very efficient and diligent with how we spend the funds that we have. So, that's right sizing, quick overview. And Craig and I are available for any questions you have.
Thank you, Steve. Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Shishka.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Let me ask you this, Steve. When we promise a neighborhood that we're going to do something in a timely manner, and there have been several neighborhoods that have been expecting us to do things in a timely manner, and we haven't been able to do that because we've gone to other things, how are we working with those people to make sure that we rectify that situation?
Okay. Good question, Councilman. There's two parts to that. We do our best to communicate with the residents. We've had, through public meetings, through mailers, through our website, we post the status of the project. If a project has been delayed for some reason, we try to communicate our best to all the residents. It's not a perfect science. We do our best, and we try to address those situations on a case-by-case basis when a resident calls and says, I thought we were supposed to be here. Comment. On the other hand, we've been working on improving how we deliver projects. We're looking at trying to balance the funding that we have. As we went through this budget process this past year, we saw many projects go to an unfunded category. We didn't like that any more than the council did. We want to, as a project comes up, we want to design it efficiently and right-sized, and then we want to deliver it within the budget constraints that we have. So, as we're moving forward here, we're addressing those issues to the best of our ability. It mainly gets down to allocation of funds for the capital program.
Yeah, Craig.
Another item, excuse me, another item as part of that is, now, when we look at these projects from the microscope and start to bring in this right sizing, then we reduce the overall cost of each one of them. Then it allows us to stay on track with the timing that has been represented and considered for the projects. For instance, one like that would be South Washington. That neighborhood, we have had the public meetings, discussed timing, plans, when the project would be completed. And then through the budget process this last year, it ended up in the unfunded category. However, we have another project that is funded, the last one on the list, Carlton-Alarkin Streets. We're representing that it's at 15% plans, and it's currently funded. With 15% plans today, there's no way we're going to be able to deliver that within this fiscal year. So, I guess our recommendation would be by working with finance and looking at our ultimate funds available, with right-sized pricing of projects, our recommendation would be to bring that one forward and move Carlton-Alarkin into further years, being that we're not in a place to bring it forward at this time.
I have a question on drainage. One of the things we ran into were drainage problems on the Alarkin Street project. And I do know that there's been at times problems with communicating with the drainage specialist within the department. So, could you give me a way forward with, you know, drainage in particular, on the projects that you have here, and how things are changing with the way you look at drainage?
I could address that if you would like. We will never again not consult with our drainage engineer before doing a road project, period, exclamation point. Is that accurate, Craig?
That's pretty clear.
Yes. Thank you. I wanted to ask a question about the natural flow of things when we consider drainage. Are we a community that should be looking at the ultimate drainage situation, underground everything? Or are we a community that should be, let's say, enhancing our natural drainage abilities? And, you know, that, of course, allows us to also, you know, right-size things.
Correct. And I believe that's kind of where we're heading in the right sizing concept in terms of drainage. Our previous direction had been to follow our standards for all the projects, which is fine when you're building something brand-new. When you're retrofitting existing streets, you have limited resources in terms of horizontal features, as well as underground features. You already have water lines, you already have sewer lines, you have gas mains, you have all this underground infrastructure that if you introduce a drainage structure in the middle of that, something's got to move. So, that's what we're trying to do, is as we look at projects, we're having that mind's eye of improving the situation, not necessarily fixing it 100%. We want to make it better than what we started, and that's what we're looking for.
I really appreciate your answers. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a recommendation, if you'd give me a second or two. I was just talking to Mark. You know, we're battling citizen expectations of a lot of work that should have been done two or three years ago. And in my mind, everything that is 60% or more, I would like on the street by the end of this fiscal year. Is that realistic? And if I have to get short-term financing to make that happen, I'll talk to council. We owe it to these people to start this work.
Right. I think the -- we have, there's, the short answer is yes, we can. The explanation is that we do have a manpower issue that we need to work through. We also have a construction manpower issue to work through. We have so many contractors that have so much production capability that we may not be able to get all these on the street at the same time. It also may not be, it may be very impactful to the motoring public to have this whole area torn up at once. So, what we'd like to do is deliver the projects definitely, but in some logical sequence that we minimize the disruption to the public.
I get that. If something's been ready at this point, I think we should put it on the street.
The plan of Willis-Cortez and Bashford, they're going to go out the next two weeks.
I think 60 days later, if you could get the 90% plans on the street, that would be great, too.
That's highly likely.
And then the three 60% plans, if we could get on the street by the end of this fiscal year, I would feel much better about delivering on what we promised.
Okay. One comment in regards to Penn Eastwood there, we listed as 90%. Penn Eastwood definitely needs that microscope for the right sizing and has the ability to, so that will take additional design.
And I don't want to stop you guys from doing that. And that needs to be done. I mean, you look at a 15% reduction on a project that's 5.6 million, that's significant money.
And that's just drainage, right sizing. We haven't looked at other opportunities in regards to curb, sidewalk, things like that, to make sure we are replacing what's absolutely needed.
That's what I would like to see, and I think that's what council would like to see. Am I wrong about that, or is that?
I think that's good. Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at the last several years of budgeting and planning, it was pretty clear to me that there was adequate funding, but apparently some kind of chronic inability to deliver on these projects. So, it seemed like, from what I saw, there was always about $30 million left in those funds, when we just couldn't plan, construct, and deliver these projects in a timely manner. And that is really impacting the city's and the residents' ability to have confidence in our ability to keep up with these projects. So, that's pretty clear to me. When you're describing your planning, you're talking about a wide number of variables. And it seems to me that there's got to be some type of software program available in this part of Public Works to keep, put all these variables in some type of a scoring format, so that you can balance the condition, the demand, the volume, all the things that you mentioned, come up with some kind of a scoring number that makes some sense, that you can really rigidly follow. One of the problems was we always had these shifting priorities. You make your list, and then politically, somebody comes in and changes it on you. And, you know, we just didn't get it done. So, that seems to be something that needs to be focused on more effectively. And there are certain parts of the city that really have to have some priority, for example, the historic downtown core. This is not just a condition of the streets or this particular neighborhood. It's a function of how our city is viewed by tourists, by business development. They come into that core, and that's where their impressions are formed. So, that's probably a legitimate reason to raise that priority for those reasons alone. And I didn't hear that mentioned, so maybe that's not part of your scoring criteria.
Thank you, Councilman. One of the things that we do look at is that we do get direction from council on the general ideas of what projects or project areas are important to the council. One of the things that we've heard over the recent years is, we want the downtown or economic engine to work and function as best as it can. And that's where we've been focusing, not to the exclusion of other parts of the city, but we're trying to balance maybe two projects downtown to one project somewhere else, because the downtown is, from a utility perspective, a lot of it needs some upgrading. Streets need some upgrading. So, we're trying to focus and balance those priorities, and we're willing to prioritize and add that factor to all the engineering side of things that guide most of this project's specifics. So, we'd welcome direction on which areas to focus on. We understand we have the whole city to take into account, but if there's a focus or a direction to enhance the downtown, and that's the direction we've been heading. In terms of delivery of projects, as you've mentioned, there has been, in the history the last few years, of leaving some money on the table, so to speak. One of the things that you see here, and the reason why you put this slide up, is that we're beyond that at this point, and moving to delivering a significant amount of the capital program that was identified. We're at almost halfway, and we're just less than halfway through the year. So, we're moving in a very positive direction. So, that should hopefully give the council some comfort level that we are on the track to deliver.
Have you considered combining some of these projects?
Oh, yes.
So, you have bigger dollars, so you could attract more substantial bidders on the projects?
We've looked at both, making them larger to attract one type of contractor. We've also looked at making them smaller to attract a different type of contractor. Some contractors that we have available to us have the abilities to do a certain size project or a certain complexity of project. And if we make a project too large of area or have too many multiple areas of construction, it limits the type of contractors that can respond. So, we're looking at both.
And by the way, congratulations, Craig, on your elevation. So, I've heard many positive things about your experience and capabilities, and we're looking for great things from you.
Councilman Blair.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you guys. You know, not often do you get a chance to get beat up or get told thank you. And also, I don't think it's a delivery from the contractor's side. I think we got plenty of qualified engineers and qualified contractors within the region. We've got one sitting in the audience. I got to tell you, Marina Street looks wonderful. I did not get one complaint through the whole process, and I think we have the ability to produce the projects. One thing I have struggles with is the fact that I think we overdesigned some of these projects, meaning maybe somebody's opinion as an engineer would look pretty, but we don't need to spend the money on pretty. And we can't increase the drainage any more than the drainage is there already. We have an old, historic downtown, so you're not going to create something that's bigger and better because you're overloading the system. So, the question becomes, is how far do we go? And Penn Avenue is a prime example. Have we addressed the population of that area to say, do we really need street, curb, sidewalk, all that stuff? Because they chose to live in an area that's a little bit more remote than downtown. Maybe what we need to do there is put a ribbon, curb, and asphalt, and say, done, and not try to over-design it. Same way with on Walnut Street. Walnut Street has asphalt, Mr. Lamerson's brought it up before. People choose to live in that environment, so be them. However, we also have the ability to use the monies that we receive from the federal government, and we're able to use those sidewalk funds later on to improve a blighted area. So, we really need to look at all those things that are our tools, and not say, let's go into Walnut Street, it's not on the list, but as an example. So, let's not run in there and put curb, gutter, sidewalk, when we know we might be able to use CBDG money a year later and put the sidewalks in it later on. And I think you guys are doing a hell of a job. It's tough to manage all those balls at once, but I think we've got a great team in place. Thank you for your elevation, your elevation. Michael, I think you've got a good team in place. And I think we just need to look at each and every project, and like you said, right sizing it and getting input of whether we're doing too much. Alarkin may have been too much, and we knew Alarkin had 12-inch curbs, and we went down to four and six. Do we think we're going to have a problem? Well, hell, yeah. So, I think we need to just change some things that we're doing, but I think you're on the right track, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question on the slide that says transportation system, and our goal is safe movement for all users. How is that measured? Is that collaboration with the police department, computer modeling? Is that collaboration with the police department, computer modeling? How do we gauge that?
It's a combination of a lot of things. One of the things when we embarked initially on the street projects, a couple of years ago, we did talk with all the city and exterior groups, everybody from police, fire, Prescott Creeks, to businesses, of how we want to approach things, of what's important to them. Because what's important to BD might not be as important to a HOA. So we tried to balance everything. One of the, how we measure this is looking at, from our traffic engineer, Ian Mattingly, some of the history of vehicle collisions. Are they vehicle-to-vehicle, vehicle-to-object, pedestrian, bicycle? And look at what's going on and what the history is. And looking at opportunities to say, "We saw that this area over here experienced these types of collisions. We have the same sort of physical condition over here. We haven't seen those yet. Maybe we should be proactive and address those before we have a challenge." So we do look at a combination of things, mostly history of collisions.
Thank you.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor. I compliment you similarly to what Blair was saying. I also agree with Councilman Good on some issues with regards to quality of service and service levels. You know, being a, oh, I guess you would say, basic service sort of proponent. You know, it troubles me that some areas of town, we've got pretty good service. We've got, whether it's police, fire, water, sewer, you know, trash, roads, blah, blah, blah. We've got better than a C. Other areas, we have an F. Okay? Roads is very apparent that some areas, we strive real hard to maintain at least a B or better, and that's good. I agree with Councilman Good with regards to trying to keep the downtown, which generates a lot of revenue within tourism, and, you know, it's a place that everybody wants to come and look at, et cetera. And our exposure is very high because of that. On the other hand, sometimes where I agree with Councilman Blair, we overbuild certain areas out in the middle of the tulips someplace, when indeed, it's been good this way for the last 30, 40 years, and then all of a sudden, we come in with all these new fang-dangled things to try and improve an area. And really, if it's been working, why are we changing it rather than maintaining it if indeed, we've got other areas of town that we're maintaining an F? I mean, it just, you know, it just doesn't seem righteous to me that we would ever not try and keep everybody in the city at least at a service level of a C or better. You know, whether it be on our roads, or our trash pickup, or our water, or whatever the case would be, that all those basic services are very important to all the residents of the city, and that we should at least strive to maintain, you know, a policy from a standpoint that nobody's dumped into the F category.
Very, very good comments. We hear you and understand.
Yeah, go ahead.
One quick thing, city manager. I know in the last council, and I think the people that were here last time, we understood we were going to group together some projects downtown. And the idea of why we're going to group them downtown, number one, is because we didn't want two different contractors walking over top of one another when it comes to mobilization and moving traffic. Have we changed our focus on doing that? From my standpoint, I think we need to move hard and fast on grouping those one downtown and getting them done, and I think they need to be tied together.
I think that, Councilman Blair, you make an excellent point. And some of these, there's a natural marriage that can be created, and we can, especially the percentage of the plan design, I would think that there's some ways to do some kind of coupling of these projects that would make some sense. And we are going to do that.
And that's all I ask, because there's without a doubt, when you get in the construction world, there's a lot of saving in money for mobilization. And when you all of a sudden, you have utilities that are underway, and two different companies, or possibly three, it makes more sense to have one company know what they're doing and how to close down roads and use the traffic signals and everything else the way they need to.
I think if I heard everybody's comments in their totality, you want us to continue to look at right sizing. You want the work specifically on these seven streets out in the next few months. Is that fair? And you want us to look at where we can couple work where that's possible. I think that's pretty clear direction.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, are you still with us?
I am. Yeah. I have a question. I agree with Councilman Blair about the SEMAR. If we can combine some things, especially like we talked about in downtown. My question on Bashford Court and the right sizing, will the right sizing still, one of the big issues with Bashford Court is this skating rink in the winter? And will we take care of that drainage issue there?
Did you hear that okay?
Yes. The Bashford Court project right sizing is right-sized from the beginning. There's, it's a small area. We're, with the drainage improvements planned for that, we're reducing greatly the potential for the ice rink effect and to address the condition of the Bashford Court parking lot. So we're trying to make it...
But that's good. And one last comment. You know, I think the integrity of the city is something we really need to maintain. Our citizens have a one cent sales tax for our roads and streets, and I think it's important that we, with South Washington, if we get them in the five-year program, where will they be in the five-year program?
Billy, we're talking about getting their job done by the end of this, or at least actually have it out to bid by the end of the fiscal year. So the work would be done next fiscal year, probably.
So how much design? What, how far we are with their design?
60%.
Okay. All right. I just think it needs to be top priority.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Is there any public comment? Yeah, go ahead. Come on up.
You follow the rules.
Mike Fan?
Thank you. I think you all know me. I just wanted to comment on delivering these projects and future projects. Should the city manager and the public works director come to you and suggest alternate delivery? From a contractor's standpoint, in certain cases, specifically to these, we would advocate that also. A few years ago, the legislature changed the way, in Title 30, ARS Title 34, changed the way Arizona procures its public works. And they got away from just the cheapest bid, which is the way many public works contracts are led. And they went to alternate delivery, which is SEMAR, Construction Manager at Risk, where you get a guaranteed maximum price for the contractor, and the chances of litigation, the chances of claims, the chances of change orders are almost nil. Or job order contracting, or design-build contracting. All of these projects lend themselves to SEMAR contracting. When you hard-bid a job, you get a real nice low number at the beginning. But at the end of the job, then you got to start looking at change orders, and claims, and late delivery, and added administration costs. The SEMAR project brings the contractor in early with city staff and the engineer. The contractor works with the city to come up with a set of plans that has done constructability reviews. They work on construction estimates as the design is being, as ongoing. There's value engineering discussions going on as the design is going. And they work together to not only bring together a set of plans that's complete and thorough, and does not have any change orders, with, again, a guaranteed maximum price, but it's brought together very quickly because you're working with the contractor all along the way. When it comes to the negotiating side, the SEMAR process, you have the contractor under a fixed fee that helps you design it, that is usually 3%, 4%. It's very reasonable. And then you try to negotiate a price. And if you can't negotiate a price with that contractor, then you still get the chance to go to a hard bid. If you don't like his price, you don't contract with him. So to deliver in these projects fast, I would advocate looking hard at SEMAR early. And I will guarantee you, I'm not, I'm kind of stepping on my own foot here, because you're going to guarantee, I'm going to guarantee you, you're going to get more contractors looking at your work. So by doing that, you're going to invite the guys from the valley up here to look at it, which frankly, I don't like. But it's going to give you a process that is really going to not be the cheapest contractor that's going to take a set of plans and specs and give you the minimum that's on those plans and specs. Speaking from this contractor, we like to be considerate of the neighborhood. We like to be considerate of the businesses. We like to not meet just the minimum standard. We want to give you a nice, smooth payment that's above the minimum standard. But I will tell you, under the hard-bid contracting, you, in essence, as a public agency, bring all the contractors in the room at a pre-bid conference, and you say, "Guys, we're going to give this job to one guy, and that's the cheapest guy in here. And that's the only guy that's going to get this job, and the rest of you are going to spend many times thousands of dollars putting the bid together and go home empty-handed. So you better figure out a way to be cheap." So putting the extras in a bid is very difficult. When it comes to hard bidding, it's a dog-eat-dog world. So is my five minutes up?
No.
So anyway, I think on jobs that have lots of existing underground utilities, pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic, housing businesses, unknown soil conditions, a lot of things that lend itself to unknowns, the SEMAR process is far superior than hard bidding, and you can deliver a project quicker. All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
Mayor, can I make a comment, Mike?
Sure. Mayor Pro Tem has a comment for you, Mr. Fan.
Yes, Mike, I would just like to say, congratulations on how you and Jason have done Marina Street. It's beautiful. You did it like C. said, with no complaints coming in, so, because you communicated with the business and the residents. So congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Any other comments from the public? All right. Seeing none, we will adjourn and be back at 3:00. Thank you.